Okay, welcome to the May 24th, 2022, meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. As usual, we open with public forum. Is anybody here tonight for public forum? Oh, come on up. We're joined by Bobby Betsold and, of course, the famous Paul Labby, who had the town report dedicated to him this year, very, very deservingly.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for everything, Paul. So shoot.
So, we just wanted to come in and update everyone as far as this weekend's Memorial Day exercises and Memorial Day parade, and just provide everyone kind of what the plan is and what timing. I know Karen has a flyer that has been posted on the website and on Facebook. But ultimately, so the parade will kick off at 12:30 PM from the Legion, and we'll proceed down Maple Street onto Main Street and here to the center of town. It will kick off with a flyover coming down Main Street, so that will be the start of the parade and help people know that it's starting. With this year, we're commemorating the 100th anniversary of the Hatfield American Legion, which occurred a couple of years ago with COVID, but this is the first dedicated Memorial Day parade, so this will be the commemoration of that. So the parade has been bolstered a bit through that. So in addition to the Legion and the veterans and our local town officials, we also have a contingency of antique cars, of tractors, and then we have the Chester Fife and Drum Corps, which will be joining us, which will be a great treat, and then also the Melha Shriners are bringing their contingency in. So the parade will be larger than what we've historically had for Memorial Day parades here, so hopefully people will come out. In terms of coordination with that, there will be some temporary road closures. So Elm Street at Dwight Street will be closed starting at noon time, as well as here, Main Street will close at School Street, and then Prospect Street at the Market and that. So all those three closures will all take effect starting at noon time until the parade is concluded. So we just ask people to please try and be in before then. And once the parade is concluded, then the Memorial Day exercises will take place here in Smith Academy Park next to Town Hall, and that will be the normal program that the Legion has. So, Paul, if there's anything you have to add?
The Shriners will be escorted out of town immediately after they go across the finish line here, up School Street and out. So we'll have them gone, so the exercises will be done. I do want to stress that when we presented this package to the American Legion, they accepted the other additional stuff in the parade because of the 100th anniversary. But this will be the only year it will go back to a normal, quiet Memorial Day parade as of next year, so it's going to be this year. I just want to make that very clear, because they were very clear to me when I did that. Well, Bobby, you've been a great help. We've had some other folks that have kicked in some time, and we'll put on a nice little parade this year, and it should be a good deal.
I guess I would just add, I don't know, did you mention the Smith Academy Band being too?
Yeah, sorry, the Smith Academy Band is where we'll be part of.
Because that's always great, and then they take part in the exercises, too. And I saw that, you know, the ceremony that's done is always so nice, right? There's the reading of the Gettysburg Address, and it's just really wonderful ceremony. And I saw that Lieutenant Colonel John Paradise is the guest speaker. Some people may not know him, but he's a decorated veteran and a really strong advocate for local veterans, so I was pleased to see him on the.
I just want to add, at 10 o'clock in the morning, the Legions on their guard will be going to each cemetery in town and doing a volley and tap. So if anybody wants to be at cemeteries, just be there at 10.
It's a good opportunity to thank our favorite veteran sitting here, who always has an important role on Memorial Day and Veterans' Day, so thank you, Ed. Great, I'm glad to get this out. And then there is a Facebook, you put it up on the Town of Hatfield website?
Karen did.
Karen did, excuse me. And I know I shared it, so I think a couple of other people have shared it, so people should, and that's got the full breakdown of everything.
Yep, the full schedule and all the details. And also, I believe the post was shared on the Chicken Barbecue, which is on Monday. So if people know that.
That's correct.
So the parade and the exercises are on Sunday, the Chicken Barbecue is on Monday.
Could you just mention how to obtain tickets for the Chicken Barbecue? There were some people in Town Hall looking for tickets.
Do you have that information? I actually don't have that information as far as tickets.
All I know is like Tom Tataro has tickets, and the cutoff is tomorrow, which is Wednesday, because they need a number for a head count. So there's still some tickets available. People can contact Tom Tataro, or there's a few Legion members besides myself that have tickets out there. So get them, get them by tomorrow.
That's all we've got?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work to make this happen.
Thank you.
The flags are up.
Yep.
And they look beautiful. It always looks nice to see that, so thank you very much.
I also want to mention Paul's been Parade Marshal for this parade for numbers and numbers of years. Hats off to Paul Labby for all the work he's done as Parade Marshal over the years. So thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul. Thank you, Paul. Look at that. Paul's going to get so used to applause. He's going to expect them everywhere he goes.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. We'll see you Sunday. We'll see you Sunday.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much. For announcements, I guess I would want to, I want to say congratulations to the folks who won seats, new seats on boards last week. So we had Adam Sullivan join the school committee, Bob Ozy was reelected, so that's another one, was reelected to the Board of Health. Lee Bell was elected to the planning board. There were a bunch of unopposed races, but those were the contested races, right? Those three only? I think so. So congratulations to them, and I guess I would just thank the voters for the opportunity to have another term here. That was appreciated. I do enjoy it. Do you have any announcements?
I just want to mention to people, the Hatfield Council of Aging on July 22nd has the Dan Kane Singers, which will be playing at the Pavilion. There's a donation requested. You can look on the website. And also, I want to remind people, I'm going to call it the Summer Concert Series, because throughout the summer, there are concerts and events happening outside here. And you either can go to the Hatfield webpage and look up these series as their concert series page, or contact the Council of Aging for more information. So there are different times, afternoon and evening, so I just want people to take advantage of that opportunity to have these concerts in the summer. So I think it's sort of neat.
June, July, August, and September. And that information is also on Facebook, and I've noticed it being shared quite a bit. So hopefully, well, we've always had good crowds when we do those. They're really great. So that was great to point out. Anything else?
I'm good.
Nothing from me.
Nothing from you. Okay. So we have some minutes to approve.
Yep. I'll make a motion to approve the Select Board Executive Session Minutes from March 29th.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve the March 31st, 2022 Select Board Meeting Minutes.
Second.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion? I just will abstain from this because I was not able to attend that meeting.
All right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Did you participate remotely, though?
No.
You didn't? Oh, okay, so that will need to be changed. I thought you did. Nope.
I'll make a motion to approve both the May 3rd, 2022, and May 10th, 2022 Select Board Minutes.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to approve the May 18th regular meeting minutes and the May 18th executive session meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
Yep.
Okay, I lost my agenda. Here we go. Okay.
All those in favor?
Oh, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Getting ahead of myself. All right, so topic one is reorganization of the Select Board.
I'll make a motion to nominate Diana Chair, Diana Chair. Diana, as I know, will be Chairwoman of the Hatfield Select Board.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. I actually, I actually like being Chair. We're going to table the discussion on liaison, department liaisons, correct?
Yes.
And now, we have, the next order of business is a one-day liquor license application from David Capriati, The Beer Guy LLC. Did you want to come up to the microphone?
Hello again, Dave.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you, Ben?
I'm doing very well.
Good to see you again.
Nice to see you people as well.
Thanks.
So this is for a private party that is being held down at the Pavilion on June 5th.
Yeah, it's his family event. So it's only, it's only family members that are invited, family, close friends, and...
Right.
Yeah.
I'm invited.
Something, something very basic and simple. They're just having catered and food.
Yep.
It's a very short, it's an afternoon event.
And it looks like everything is in order, Karen? Great. I will take a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license on June 5th, 2022.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
Just nice to see Dave again, and thank you, and sorry you had to come all the way out here.
That's okay, I don't, I don't mind. You know, we're, we're back to rolling again, so I'm glad that a lot of stuff is opening up. I just get out and... I'm booked all the way through December 13th, every Wednesday through Sunday.
Good for you.
That's great.
So everybody is back in session.
Getting back at it.
Back at it for all the outdoor stuff. It's going to be a good season for us.
Good, glad to hear that.
It was tough last year.
Yeah.
Probably for the last two years.
Yeah.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. How easy was that?
Thank you.
You're all set.
You're welcome.
I'll email you.
You can email it to yours, drop it in mail or whatever, I'm fine.
I am.
Okay, thank you. Everybody have a good night.
The Shared Streets?
Yeah, well, Lydia is here and then...
Oh, yeah, sorry. I was instructed to do this, and yet they still voted me Chair. I've already made two mistakes tonight. All right, so we are going to go a little bit out of order and take up, there was, we have received notice that we were awarded a, is it Safe Streets?
Shared Streets and Spaces Program.
Phil, do you want to come up and just give a quick discussion about this? Just a quick overview, so that residents understand, it's a sizable grant and what it can be used for?
So originally, we were going to put the flashing crosswalk signals such as are on School Street, right here by the old age project, the Housing Authority, at the intersection of North Street and Main Street. We put it in for capital, so I withdrew it with the knowledge of the grant being available. So the first conversation with the state about that grant, they said, "Well, why don't you ask for more?" So I said, "Okay." So we included four specific areas by Smith Academy, the original one on North Street and the Main Street, one here by the Market, and then one up by the 55 and older housing.
Okay.
So them are the four locations, plus a little maybe, we put it in the grant, we got to look at it again, about extending the sidewalk that ends in front of the Housing Authority up School, up School Street on that side of the road, because there's no sidewalk on that side of the road.
Oh, yeah, it does just sort of all of a sudden end there.
So that would give them two opportunities to cross there. So the grant application was accepted by the state for the amount of $56,000 and change.
$56,000, great. Congratulations, Phil. Thanks for your hard work on this.
You know, as you can see...
And you know, these locations are good for all residents, but really students and the folks that live at Capital.
Yeah, and I figured, you know, that, you know, a lot of people have contacted me over the course of the years after people were in the 55 and older community up there. You know, they wanted a street light put up, and they wanted a crosswalk markings, and, you know, that was a great place, I thought, to put one, so we did that.
Well, it's kind of a high-speed area, and there's a lot of people, you know, I see a lot of people who live in that development, walking dogs and...
It's really not that visible on the other side of the street, so...
I think the other, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, I think, and I think I've said it at our last few meetings, I think the other reminder to townspeople, and people who aren't going to see this because they're not from town, but Main Street becomes, it's like a freeway sometimes, and I mean, people have got to cool it.
Just going to get my lunch.
Yeah, I mean, we have crosswalks, and they might not have a sign in them, but the law is, you stop, or at least slow down to make sure the person isn't stepping in front of you. So I, just a reminder, it's that time of year, we have tons of walkers, they like to go from this side of the street of Town Hall over towards the Dyke, or to the Market, or whatever. And I said, I mean, I've noticed it myself.
I think it's a chronic problem everywhere. We notice it on our street.
I mean, it's just slow down.
Yeah.
And if you see a pedestrian, just assume they're going to step in front of you.
Well, you know, we all live here, right? And, you know, just...
Plus, you know, when this one was first put up, you know, you know the complaints we received that people weren't stopping at it. So now with, you know, there's four locations, and that one, that's five. People should be used to it after that.
Yeah, just slow down, that's all. Make it easier to stop.
Great. Okay, so we need to vote to accept these grant funds? I thought we, okay.
To vote to enter into an agreement with the contract for this program.
Okay.
I'll make that motion, that Marlene just said.
I'll second whatever Brian just said, okay.
I do have a question, though.
Yes.
So this is a reimbursable grant.
It is a reimbursable grant.
Do we know yet where the initial funding would come from? I think we, we treat it like Chapter 90, as I read the documents you sent us.
I was going to say, it says that in there. It's treated like Chapter 90, so it'll come out of your operating expenses.
And then go back, and then the grant will go back into the operating expense.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, usually the turnaround is, I know the state grants, I do the turnarounds pretty fast, so...
So actually, Brian, if I could just clarify, what the accountant will do is set up a fund for that grant.
Yes, yeah.
Initially, the money's expended from the operations budget. When the money, the revenue comes in, then the accountant makes an adjustment on the expense side, so just...
Great, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that wherever it was coming from is where it went back to, not just into free cash.
So it does really go back, but it's just, it shows it going out and then returning.
So we would probably wait till after July 1st to expend any of, to expend any of the funding?
I think there's August 8 on the grant. That's not available till August or something. I thought it's on there.
Yeah.
First, it says we can send the paperwork.
And you have until December of 2023 to expend it.
You mean, you can begin the expenditures after July?
We can sign the paperwork whenever, and we can't, we won't expect the reimbursement until after then. But my question is, from an operations budget, it probably, we're at the end of one fiscal year, starting a new fiscal year, right?
We won't start any projects until July 1st. We want to see, you know, we're going to make the call after the contracts are signed, and we want to call the vendors and see what's available out there, because as you know, the supply chain is pretty limited, so...
Right.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And so, Lydia, you want me to just sign these right now? One of these documents requires a notary.
Yeah, I think it's the third.
The only question I have, Marlene, is are we going to do the same paperwork as we do under Chapter 90 for the reimbursement?
This is not the one.
So like Garrett does all the reimbursement forms? Is that how we're going to operate this? Who's going to be the signature?
Yeah, if you do the reimbursement...
Who's going to be the signature?
Well, the names who sign contracts, myself and any member of the Select Board is on there.
Yeah.
But if he's requesting reimbursement, he doesn't...
Because like with Chapter 90, when we put, you know, as he has to go to all the selectmen and get their signatures, are we going to generate the reimbursement forms like we do under Chapter 90?
So the rest is for you.
Because I think that's the form they want to use.
Okay.
That was my, so Marlene sent us all the documents that she had received, or you had received anyhow, and you guys know a lot more about this than I do, but that was my interpretation. Somewhere, one of those attachments basically said, "This is just like Chapter 90. Do it this way, do it this way, do it that way," so...
I think it's under the Chapter 90 form, the reimbursement form. I think it's the same form.
The process is the same. I don't know if it's the same form, but it's the same process, is what they kept saying in the thing. Good job, Phil and Garrett. Thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you very much. That's great. Nice work. Okay, so moving through the agenda here, topic three is appointments. First, we have Comprehensive Planning Committee.
That's been tabled.
Oh, that's been tabled?
Yeah.
And election workers?
Yeah, so those names listed there, the town clerk is recommending, recommending those individuals to be appointed.
I'll make a motion to appoint Marlene Machansky, Karen Broder, Matthew Hunt, and Brenda Keer to be election workers and called upon when necessary.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then decommissioning the 350th Committee?
Yes, you have a letter in your packet from Co-Chair Ed Lesko.
So I would just, so I'll make the motion, I'll make a vote to decommission the 350th Committee, as requested by the 350th Committee.
And that was also authorized by Town Meeting, right?
And that was authorized by Town Meeting, yes.
Second.
All right. I just want to thank them, the Committee as a whole, once again, for the fabulous job and under the extenuating circumstances that arose over the couple of years that they did this and still pulled it off, and all the side events that went with it. So I just felt I wanted to publicly state that again for everybody involved in the Committee.
Yeah, I mean, there was, there was a lot of work involved, and a lot of people did an enormous amount of work. I was on the Committee and saw the people that really stepped up and did that, so...
Not only do I want to thank them, I want to thank them for continuing because they, some of those folks now are working towards helping out with getting events for town and other activities, so I give them a lot of credit for continuing to give this town some nice stuff to happen.
You know, and to be honest, it was some of the things they had to redo and restructure to make things COVID compliant that then led to the summer events. It sort of was a crooked path to get there, so there was a little bit of a silver lining, I guess, to some of that.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, so there was a motion made in second. Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Lydia, do you want this back?
Carryover of vacation time, Marlene?
Yes, so there's three requests. I noticed that later today. Lydia, did you want this back? This is yours, I think? Okay, yes, three requests, one from Ken Holhut, Phil Genavese, and Tony Listowski.
I, you know, I, it goes back to our conversation last week, I think, or last month. You know, I think we're still coming out of the times of the pandemic when staffs were oftentimes shorthanded and unable to use a vacation time. But, but I also want to reiterate what I said at the last meeting, which is, other than extenuating circumstances, and hopefully we won't have anything like we just went through, and Ed always says this, "We want people to use their vacation time." People need a break. They need to step away from the office, step away from their job. It's good for your mental health, and I'm not going to, I don't think I'll be very inclined in the future, again, unless there's really good circumstances as to why, to approve any more extensions. I know there's always, there can be extenuating circumstances, but we need people to use their time. You already get to carry over some as it is, and so this is on top of that. But I don't have a problem approving it this year, but I mean, we've got to stop.
I would agree, because then it just kicks the can down the road, and it makes it, it just mushes.
And we just don't have enough employees to cover it, if people end up taking all the time they're entitled to. So, so anyway.
So they should, employees should be thinking about using it throughout the day.
Yeah, use your, use your time. So I'll make a motion to approve the carryover as requested by Director Phil Genavese, Ken Holhut, and Tony Listowski.
Now, I'll second that, but I do concur with what you're saying, Brian. I think also, we have to start looking at how to provide some additional help so people can take time off. I mean, if we have a shortage in a department, it's obviously a person can't take off because there's nobody there, so we got to start looking at ways to try to help our departments with somebody to cover that position so they can take time off, so...
Agreed.
I'll second that with that comment.
We do run a lean ship.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, motion made in second. Other than that, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we, I think we need, I'm not just speaking to you, Diana, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, the next thing I see is about the vehicle lease?
Yes.
Okay, so Town Meeting already approved this?
The budget.
In the budget, and what we're actually doing is, what are we, approving the resolution? Am I using the right terminology, Marlene? What, I mean, we're approving entering into the lease program?
The actual signing of the, the actual lease agreement.
So I'll make a motion to approve and enter into the agreement for the lease.
I'll second that, because the town has approved this already.
As presented, as approved at Town Meeting, yeah.
You seconded that, Ed?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the fuel contracts?
So the Franklin Regional Council of Governments is putting this out to bid, the fuel contracts, and the DPW pretty much on a regular basis participates in that, and they have asked that...
I think that's just you.
Oh, it is just me? Oh, sorry.
I think that, just you.
Sorry. Go ahead. Wait a minute, where's the, wait a second. Go ahead, Marlene, keep talking. I'm talking myself.
Okay.
Where is the lease agreement?
I don't know.
Oh, that one there, you signed at the end.
Oh, okay, that, I came in and signed some...
Oh, okay, yeah, that's right.
Now we made it official.
Okay, sorry, Marlene, I didn't mean to interrupt.
So Franklin Regional Council of Governments is just asking that boards vote in advance of, because it has to be done by, no later than Tuesday, June 7th, and we did not anticipate the board meeting prior to that. So I'm asking the board to vote the authorization for either me to sign the contracts for the fuel bids, or if the Chair would like to sign those. Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter to me.
So we do this pretty much yearly, don't we, do we not? For however many years the contract is normally for?
Usually, you're on the annual, on the annual basis.
Annual, right?
Basis, yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay, so, so we don't know what the fixed price is. We have to assume that prices are going to go up. So they're looking for a commitment, though, before, before we know the amount we're committing to. Is that fair to say?
That's fair to say.
News is, and to, I mean, as of right now, I can't imagine it's going anywhere but up, but, but it's for a year, right?
Garrett has recommended a fixed price.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask.
There's the fixed and the variable, and he has, he has opted to go with the fixed rate.
Okay, well, I believe our, yep, that's, that was where my question was leading, was to what the DPW thought, given their past experience.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, basically, this is one of those where we roll the dice. If it goes up, we win. If it goes down, we lose. I mean, it's...
Yeah.
Right, and you know, we, you know, we explore the variable prices, and is it really worth it? I mean, I don't think so. You know, we'd rather have a fixed number and a fixed number in the budget, and we know we have the money to cover that.
Right.
Because you have to put an estimated fuel consumption for both diesel and gas.
Well, and the projections are not that it's going down, so...
Not anytime soon, anyway, so... All right, well, then I will, oh, so, Marlene, are you comfortable being the person that signs it? I mean, that's, that's fine with me.
I am. There are some contracts that I...
Okay, so I'll make a motion, so the motion is really about who's going to sign it, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that the Town Administrator have the authority to enter into the contract regarding the fuel pricing with...
Second, I mean, yeah, I mean, we, we rolled the dice again, right, so...
With the Furcon.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Marlene, do we just sign these letters of agreement with the CPC? We don't vote them?